Ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to have you all stand at this time and have a moment of silence for our former president Ronald Reagan, moments of silence for Jack Burke, father-in-law of Terry Maguire, brother to Tom and Franny Burke, Shirley Shermack, mother-in-law to elementary school teacher Patty Shermack, and Arlene Favreau, mother-in-law to Barbara Favreau, here at the elementary school. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
Did you turn the tape recorder on?
No, I did do the tape for this because this tape is on. I'm taking the minutes myself.
That's when you table till Mary puts back.
Yes.
I want her to review the minutes.
I know.
She's not in today.
Oh, I see.
We're going to skip over the minutes, although I would like a motion to table the minutes because there's several questions that need to be clarified.
I'll make a motion to table the minutes.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, it's unanimous. Comments, questions, and requests? We don't have a student rep tonight. PTA representative?
Yeah, it will be the last meeting of the PTA Wednesday evening at 6:30 at the old times. And we'd like as many PTA members to be there as possible because they're going to say thank you today for doing so much for the PTA.
And this is this Wednesday?
This Wednesday at 6:30.
June 9th? June 9th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Also, the carnival is, uh...
Seven through the 11th.
Seven through the 11th. They're still looking for people to man the ticket booths. And...
Here's the other file in the paper.
Okay, class of 1954 reunion update.
How about the approval of the bills?
We already approved them. We already approved them.
You missed that, Secretary.
Nobody from the CTA?
Nobody CTA.
CTA, I'm sorry.
Oh, CTA.
This time, like I said, they did know that the teachers negotiating with the school committee have reached an intensive agreement. We account the general meeting of the union tomorrow afternoon to inform the changes in the various attributes of the contract, following due to the proposed goals. In order for ratification to occur, the vote must be 50% of those voting across one. And as soon as I know the outcome of the vote, you people will know the outcome of the vote. And I just want to let you know one more time about our already retarded Sunday celebration party is Friday at the up until 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We had a student, who was a school choice student of ours, Courtney Hisman of Clinton, was recently recognized by the Valadette University High School Academic Bowl for sportsmanship award for the deaf and hard of hearing. Courtney is a student at Monty Tech, and they have a nice picture for her in the paper. And I just think we should be proud to recognize her achievements up at Monty Tech. Superintendent's report?
Okay, I'm coming. Okay, I just want to comment on the class of 1954 reunion. Unfortunately, the representative from the class, Mrs. Moynihan, is unable to be here this evening. She called about half an hour ago for family emergency. But she did want me to express to all of you the appreciation of that class. They had a phenomenal weekend. It was a very enjoyable experience, and I certainly appreciate the kindness shown to them by the school committee to help them organize, plan, and in fact, carry out the weekend's event. So they do thank you, and I thank you on their behalf. And Mrs. West, I know you were there, and I know Mrs. McGrail was there. Perhaps either one of you would like to comment, or both of you?
The meal was excellent. Delicious.
It was a very large crowd. The 50th classes tend to look younger and younger to me every day. It was an excellent time. They were all mixing in. They had tons of door prizes. They...their class is phenomenal. They have the message machine donated to every single one of the schools. And they even donated, I believe it was a plaque at the police station. And it was a great class. They did a great job. And it was nice to see them all there, and they had a great turnout. And we thank them.
It was a pleasure having them.
It's a great tradition. Tradition Mr. Bailey began, and I'm so glad that we're able to maintain and continue that.
And the books are on their way.
Did they pass out the books that evening?
Yeah, they did bring them in that night.
Did they bring them in? And they're wonderful every year. I assume this was as good as the others.
I know somebody brought it in on the doily. Is that what you call a dolly, a doily, what?
Doily? I know that Dunn and Company...
Dave Dunn usually does those.
David Dunn is, again, another example of his extraordinary generosity to this community. He gives them great support in publishing that book. Onto the superintendent's report, under discussion items. This is an ongoing list that I give you. It seems to get longer every time, but this is the status of our staffing at the moment. It lists the retirements, which there are seven. It lists the leave of absences, two of which you'll be dealing with this evening. So this is subject to your approval. It deals with the resignations, the transfers, the new staff appointments. And I'm very, very pleased, and again, I know I said this the last time, and I want to repeat it, I really want to give applause to my team, the administrators, for finding some extraordinary talented individuals at a very reasonable price this year. So we're very happy with the selections that have been made to date. There's also a listing there of the vacancies at the moment, and you can see that list has five, seven, 11 individuals right now with open positions for next year that we have not filled yet. There's a strong possibility we will not be filling these until after the town meeting. I am some...I have some concerns about our school budget, and so we are interviewing, the principals are reviewing, the credentials of the candidates, in some cases where we are concerned that if we don't act, we may lose the candidate, and we are moving forward. But for the most part, we're trying to hold off any more appointments until after the town meeting.
Clinton needs vacancies. Are there two grade six teachers in English language at city leave?
One is a year of leave of absence, and one is a resignation. The year of leave of absence is Mrs. Torini, who's taken another year to for her child, and the other one is Mary Fitch, who has resigned.
Okay.
Okay, that takes care of that unless you have some questions. Number two is again something that's in your packet. This is the last one of these. This is the end of the year report. As you know, each year, there are a series of goals that the school committee establishes in July, and it includes focus strategies as well as sustaining strategies. And throughout the year, I work very closely with my fellow administrators to update you on where we are with these strategies. And this is the final report that you'll receive from this academic year in terms of where we are in either completed, in progress, planned for the future, or rejected. And I want to again thank everybody on the staff for the work that they've put into having a very successful year. I feel that we really have made some major steps forward this year, and this document speaks to that issue. So I didn't know if you had...rather than go through it page by page, line by line, I thought I would entertain any questions you might have.
Well, it's good to meet.
And that will be available to anybody who would like a copy as well. I'd be happy to share it with you. Moving on.
Well, you know what? On, I don't know what page it is, it's Go To Number Five.
Go To Number Five.
Go To Number Five, yes. Does that review the scope and sequence of all curricula to ensure the alignment to state standards?
Number...
Or are you under system?
Yeah, the last...the second to the last word in that paragraph, what are those processional days?
It's supposed to be professional. I apologize for that. It's professional.
Oh.
It's a typographical error. Should be professional.
I thought that was a new word in the system.
You get three new days off for processions.
The May procession, remember? It goes back to my appropriate elementary day. Anything else? Okay, the next document is another document that I worked closely recently with the administrators. There will be another issue of the Clinton Connector that will be going out probably by the end of next week, I hope. And this document, and it could have been much more than 50, I decided to pick 50 effective initiatives in five years. And so I kind of reviewed what we as a team have done in the past five years, and what were some of the truly significant changes, movements, directions this district has taken in the last five years. And so I start by saying, "In July 1999, we set out to improve educational opportunities for all students in the Clinton Public Schools. It is a task that required the shared vision, support, and involvement of all administrators, staff, parents, community members, municipal and business leaders. The theme for the past five years has been," and I quote, "Together we make the difference." I feel we have succeeded. There is not enough space to list all the initiatives that have been undertaken. Following is a list of 50 primary initiatives that have taken place during the past five years. It's also important to note that this list will continue to evolve, expand, and intensify. There will always be new ideas and strategies to improve what we have built. We thank all of you who have contributed to help us build a solid foundation that will benefit the children of this community in the years ahead." And then I listed 50 significant initiatives. They are not in any order. I want to make that very clear. Just kind of a stream of consciousness, whatever came into my mind. And Christine Bonsey helped me compile this list, and then I reviewed it with the other principals, and everybody agreed that this seemed to be a good list, I guess. Okay? So that's just again informational.
It's a great list.
Pretty impressive list. Do okay.
Next item, this again is informational. I want you all to be aware that it's going to be a very interesting year, certainly being a challenging year for Mr. Gau. I wish him well again on that, and I don't say that I'm going to miss this one. We are going to be visited by a team as part of the Education Management Audit Council. This was a...an initiative that was established some years ago, and this is a group of people that once every five years, by mandate of the state, come into school districts and examine what you are doing from an educational standpoint for your students. In particular, they look at data. That's their most important piece. I feel very comfortable with this because we have, from the very beginning, we said we were going to be a data-driven decision-making district, and this is what we have done. And so I have no fear whatsoever that we're going to do very well in this document. But once in every five years, every district in the state has to go through this audit. And there's a great deal of preparation. I'm in the process now, along with Christine and the principals, putting together all of the data we need. And they will then, in the course of the year, which I don't know exactly when that will take place, they will do a site visit, examining all the data, talk to a lot of people, examine what we have done. What do the statistics show? Have we used the money, the education reform money appropriately? How are our students doing? Are they meeting the standards that have been set as part of the performance standards, et cetera, that will all be reviewed during the coming year? It is not an indication, and they make this very clear, that they're not here to find out what's wrong. I'm more inclined to think they're coming here to find out what's right. I think that we're one of those exemplary districts that have been able to meet the challenges of educating all of our subgroups as best we can, and I think we continue to improve each year. And I think that's what they discover when they are here. But this is a process that will take place during the coming year.
Did anybody go to that...to Sanneback on June 5th for that? Oh, wait a minute. Or is that another thing?
That's the next thing.
That's the next thing. I'm ahead of myself. I'm rushing it through.
Okay, yes, the very next item, number five, is an announcement this evening that we have received a $5,000 grant called Jump Up and Go, a Healthy Choices program. It's a $5,000 grant that's sponsored by Blue Cross Blue Shield. And I'm going to ask Christine Bonsey if she would just share with you very briefly a few thoughts on that grant. I think it's very hard to hear, so I think you better come up.
Did you go, Chris? We didn't because it conflicted with graduation. I did call for our apologies. We were going...the award was going to be announced at this Go Walking event that they had in Boston, and the Patriots were going to be there, but...
It's a great program. It's on Channel 4, Bonnie.
Yeah. But they understood. They had other schools that couldn't make it as well. The records there, too. For the last two years, we've been part of the 521 program, and in the brochure you just got has the 521 message, is what we're trying to infuse in our schools and bang the message home, too, that our children should be eating five fruits and vegetable choices daily, should have no more than two hours of television and/or computers or video games daily, and at least one hour of non-competitive exercise daily. So the 521 message. And we've been a cohort group, and they've been collecting data using our middle school students on this, and I've yet to receive that report. That will be the next step. But because we've been involved as a cohort group, we were eligible to receive a $5,000 grant from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And what our teachers at the middle school and our, with the support of the administration, our health services coordinator, Ginny Gary, and our food services director, David Van Ass, as well as one of our health teachers, we form a team of people who are going to put the program activities together that are outlined in the grant. I believe, Mr. Piscopo, you have a copy of that grant, and I'd be happy to share the grant with you as well. Some of the activities that we would do, other than post this message in our cafeterias, we'll work with the food service director, and he's already started this, David. I don't know if you're aware, I already did a survey of all the students in the middle school on what their favorite foods are, what they would like to see more of. And of course, children are children, and they're going to choose things that aren't necessarily the most healthy things for them. However, we're going to try to guide their choices a little bit better by offering a variety of things. And we've already...we're already under mandate, because we receive federal funds, not to provide sodas in our soda machine, you know, those kind of things. So we're going to try to promote healthier lifestyles for our students and offer some after-school activities for our middle school students that are non-competitive, such as, and this has, it's just in the planning stages, yoga, the running club that Tom Callenhan's doing, maybe expand that a little bit more. There's a group of teachers that like to do, actually do, like a health club and keep a log of children's activities and weights and talk about nutrition. We can bring in a nutritionist from, say, Clinton Hospital, that kind of thing, to do some programmatic things in our health classes. The interesting thing about this grant is they were looking to have core teachers, core subject teachers, math, science, English, social studies, onboard as a team to promote this message in their classrooms. And when I sent out the email, just, is anybody interested in, you know, trying this? I went to Mr. Betris' faculty meeting. I had two teams from, one from the sixth grade and one from the eighth grade immediately volunteer to be part of this program. And I'm hoping, when the word gets out, a team in the fifth and the seventh grade will also jump onboard. So I'm looking forward to initiating this with Blue Cross Blue Shield. David Van Ass and I will be working with the school committee on this as well because we need to look at our policies around nutrition, and it may affect some of the language that, you know, we're using in our policies and kind of getting the message out that we know it's important that students eat well, you know, have plenty to...plenty of exercise, you know, the whole message. But the other message is, and this is becoming nationwide, obesity is a very health risk, and that our students, and we had to do data on this, what percentage of our students have a BMI? I'm not familiar with all these terms. I know, have over a certain percentage. And Mrs. McGrail, our school nurse at the middle school, was very concerned about our eighth graders, and those numbers were astounding to her. And so it's kind of timely that we're doing this, and we're starting, we're doing middle school because I think that's, more or less, parents and schools have control over the littler ones. It seems to be that age group, and I don't know, high school.
Now, is Mark Keller in these restaurant going to do something in effect of this? Because I noticed he's in the grant. He's listed as one of the local restaurants.
Well, I did, I said, we'd reach out to the Victory local restaurateurs. Maybe they could help.
A lot of the kids go up there to eat before they go movies.
We have a parent who's, who works for Adirondack, you know, who knows? We'll just, we'll try to really get that message out there.
They eliminated school bus, and they'd be a lot slower.
And save a lot of money, wouldn't they? But one of the other policies that might be, needs to be looked at, is using foods as rewards. And now we know that parents do it all the time, and we know that...
Superintendents do, too.
We know that teachers, you know, so not having candies in our school store, you know, so there's a lot of other things that are going to come as the recipient of this grant, so.
Well, you know what? You hear more and more of it, I do on television, for the children who, because of obesity, how they're trying to...I know I listen to Dr. Tim Johnson, I listen to Chronicle, and they have it more and more, you know, to give the children good food and not have that food that they're not supposed to eat. And also, that food's very important, not only is it diet, but it's the exercise, too.
That's great.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Again, great job.
Keep up the good work getting us money.
Thank you, Christine. Just two more items under discussion that I did not put into your agenda, but I'd just like to take a moment to express some words of appreciation. One, I'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Zoll. They've taken over the Reaganini Memorial...listen to my word here.
Come on, you mean.
Monuments, thank you. And it was scheduled to be ready for the Memorial Day program, which had to be postponed because of poor weather, but they moved very, very quickly at a great level of cooperation to put the granite plaque in front of the flagpole in honor of Mr. Bailey. So that is there. I hope you have an opportunity to see it, but they basically worked day and night to get that there in a timely fashion. That then has been rescheduled to the 14th of June, which is Flag Day at 1:15, and it will be held at that day. But they did work very hard to get that granite plaque in place for that event, so I do want to thank them publicly. And I also want to thank some of our students in grade five, who tomorrow are going to spend the early afternoon across the street at 150 School Street planting flowers. They have been working very hard this year with Mrs. Powers and Mrs. Coolis in the greenhouse project, and I've asked them to put aside some flowers to see if they couldn't beautify that area around the flagpole. There is a planter there, there's an area at the base of the building, and there's a circle, and they're coming down tomorrow, starting 11:45 until the end of the school day, to plant those flowers in that area. I think we'll really beautify that area. So I want to thank the students, and I particularly want to thank Mrs. Coolis and Mrs. Powers for their work in that effort. Moving on to the action items, and we have some gentlemen here that are here to speak to this evening about a request by the Clinton Fire Department for the use of our fields in July. So I'd ask them to come forward and make their proposal.
Mr. O'Connell, come on up.
Thanks for having us, too. Congratulations on your upcoming retirement, and good luck to start. Basically, nothing much changed. We've been doing, I think, since the dam has been repaired for the last few years, so we're basically looking for the grounds again for the fireworks for this year. The date is going to be the 17th of July.
Have you guys encountered any problems up there? Is there anything else you need?
Oh, you guys...no. If there's anything you need, you know, that's how, that's the way we look at it, too. You know, we're just...
I think Rick Morgan's been working closely with you.
That's the bottom line, just communication, working together, and it'll be great for the town again this year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Fire Department's request for the use of the middle school parking lot and the high school parking lot across the Yauton complex right across the street.
They're actually going to move where they're shooting the fireworks from this year.
Right. They're going to be shot this year from like the corner of the ball fields up over...
What's the date that they're doing this?
The 17th of July.
17th of July is the fireworks up at the middle school.
There's a motion on the floor and seconded by Mrs. West to okay the request of the Clinton Fire Department for July 17th for use of our facilities for fireworks. Is there any discussion?
Did you suppose...
Excuse me?
Who said?
Mrs. West seconded. Is there any discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much. And again, if there's anything we can ever do for you, we still make house calls, too.
Thank you.
I hope that never changes.
Take it easy, guys.
The next item on the agenda is the student handbook at Clinton High School, and I know that you have received in your packet on Friday the revisions that were prepared by the council, and I think particularly by Mrs. Nataro, but Mr. Gau is here to go through it page by page.
I hope.
Quickly.
This would be the old. You should have an old and a new. You don't have it.
I don't say you need to go through every page. Oh, you don't seem to need to go through it.
I reviewed it all. They're very minor.
They're mostly verbal and typo.
Yeah. I saw the, I'll tell you, when I picked up the envelope and opened it, I put it right down as a "not tonight." And when I really went through it, there was a really...yeah.
But they've worked very hard in the last several years, so there are really major changes needed this year that I'm aware of.
No, there weren't.
I'll entertain a motion then to accept the...
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
I've also brought you the last...
I made the motion.
Hot off the press?
Ah. And thank the council, they did a wonderful job again, and Susan for the...
I bring it up.
Thank you. All the revisions. It was very easy to understand and follow.
Susan, tell her.
Yeah.
Yes, she is.
Yeah, it was very easy to understand and follow from one to the other.
Where did you get the budget to put in this year?
And I believe there are no changes at the middle school handbook.
I don't like the size of the section.
Just one comment, and first of all, one of the next, which I would also, Mrs. Foley, she's kind of the editor who puts this all together with the kids. It's a monumental effort.
It's a great, I mean, this is huge.
It's enormous. Yeah, it's nice.
We've got to start our cast, though, for the Around School program next year. We've got to start that early.
You still have Michelle LaFonte left.
Yeah, we've got to recruit some more people. That's a real good show for the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Gau.
And hopefully get somebody to run camera. I think Irene wants a break.
Item three?
That program has also gotten, has enabled cable to get more volunteers to work on the local shows, because I know it relieved us a couple nights that we couldn't make it down there in Kevin's Four, and a couple of the other kids have taken over directing and cameras, and it was Irene's two kids down there, and it really helped us out a lot that, you know, we found, you know, we got the first Tuesday off every so often.
Item three has to do with the fiscal year '05 budget. I really don't have an update for you at this time. There have been no changes. I think you're all aware that the town meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 21st. I would hope that all of you, and I hope the public, will be able to be present at that meeting. It's the most important day of the year for the school department and for every department in this community. And I believe the Finance Committee, the Selectment Meeting this week, to finalize their recommended budget. So I have no further update for you at this time, but as soon as I get something, I will be sharing that with you. I do know that the budget that you have approved is the budget that will appear as a school committee-approved budget in the warrant. However, I'm not sure what the Finance Committee and the Finance Committee recommended budget will look like, but I'm sure Mr. Kittredge, the chairman, will be in touch with me as soon as a decision has been made. I'm going to ask that we table item number four as well. What we usually do this time of the year is that there are some of the line items that we have discovered in the course of the year that we need to shift some of the monies. We don't add any money, but we may discover, for example, in one of the categories, there is some money that was not expended, and in other categories, it has been over-expended, such as electricity, heat. Never knowing from year to year what the cost is going to be, we have to take money from one of those seven line items and move it into another. Unfortunately, that is not ready this evening, and Lorraine Leonard, who assists me with that initiative, is away at a conference on retirement for the municipal employees tonight, so she's not here, so we'll put that off to the next meeting as well. Okay, item number five is a request of a leave of absence from Megan Torini and Danielle Bailey. Megan Torini has requested a full year's leave of absence without pay for the 2004-2005 school year. Danielle Bailey is requesting a baby in August, and she is requesting a leave of absence until October something. Here it is, I'm sorry, October 24th. She would like to use her maternity leave from the beginning of the school year until October 24th. Depending on how things are going, she may be able to actually put in a one day a week during part of that period of time, depending on how she's feeling, the baby's feeling. This is an extremely committed individual, very, very professional person whose skills we desperately need in that Clinton Middle School, so I would hope that she would be able to give us some, whatever time she can give us would be well-used, but she has requested maternity leave through October 24th.
I'll make a motion to grant the leave as requested.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to grant the re-staffing requests from Megan Torini and Danielle Bailey. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. West. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Before you start with number six, Mrs. McBrail is asked to excuse herself, so we'll wait until she leaves the room. Okay, Mr. Filbin.
Okay, the next item has to do with staffing, a staffing request. Actually, there's two staffing requests for next year. And I did give you some background to this, just to give you a very simple recapping of it. We had put into the budget, Mr. Gau and I, had felt that there was going to be a need for a social studies teacher at Clinton High School for this coming school year. So in the budget proposal, in the Table of Organization, we had actually listed that position. When the students selected their courses for next year, program of studies, we discovered that there really wasn't a need. We could handle our social studies classes with the staffing that we have in place, but we did discover a huge gap at Clinton High School in the area of fine arts. And I don't, this is a personal perspective on this, I don't think that we do enough in the area of fine arts at the present time. And so I'm making a request that we use a portion of that money to increase the full-time equivalency for the art teacher so that we can provide more art instruction at the high school. If we don't do this, we're going to be very limited in what we can provide for the students. And I think that it's a program that is very worthwhile, very appropriate, and I think it would serve our school district well by providing that. So I'm requesting that we increase the art teaching position from 60% to 100%, and that will allow the students at Clinton High School who is to take art and computer art to have that opportunity to do that.
Do you want to do these separately?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the increased services at the Clinton High School. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Robert Epstein, Vice Chair. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Okay. I would then like to go to the next request, which has to do with physical education and health. And this has an impact on the Clinton Middle School, in particular on something I just mentioned a few minutes ago. Danielle Bailey, who is the school adjustment counselor at the Clinton Middle School and works closely with children who have enormous and intense needs, will not be as available next year as she has been in the past. And so we need to fill in that gap. Last year, up and through the end of last year, we actually had two guidance counselors at the Clinton Middle School as well as a school adjustment counselor. Because of the fiscal limitations we've had this year, we had to reduce that by one guidance counselor. So this year, there's one guidance counselor full-time, Mrs. Mary Pat Garrity, and one school adjustment counselor at 85%. Next year, Danielle Bailey is going to be missing completely the first two months, and then after that, only be working 75%. That puts a tremendous burden on the student support services at the Clinton Middle School. So what I'm asking that we do is that we increase the services at the Clinton Middle School by taking a staff member who is certified in guidance to be able to assist two days a week in the guidance office to pick up some of that gap, and then increase the position of the health and physical education teacher, and that's really what I'm requesting, to increase the position of physical education and health from a .6 position to a .8 position. The reason being is that those classes that we're asking will be covered, will be covered by the person who's going to be filling in the guidance area. So what I'm really asking you tonight is to, in your Table of Organization as part of the budget, increase that position from .6 to .8.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion to, again, approve the superintendent's recommendation to upgrade the position at the Clinton Middle School in the guidance area and in the physical education health area. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Mrs. West seconded. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor? I am unanimous. Can we just ask Mrs. McBrail she could come back into the room?
And again, a large portion of the funding for that is coming from the savings by not hiring a social studies teacher, and also by the reduction in time that Mrs. Bailey will be paid because she's reducing her hours. So it's not in any way affecting the overall budget. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next thing I would like to mention, because it's next on the list even though it's a lot of water. Yes, Mrs. McBrail has returned for the next item on the agenda, and she was excused because we were dealing with staffing issues.
Yes.
I'd like to jump to item number eight, because that really is the next item as you go through your packet, and that's the name change for what we commonly refer to as the former elementary school, the old elementary school, St. John's School, goes by multiple names, AKA whatever. I'm recommending that the official name now become the Clinton Educational Support Center.
There's a recommendation from Superintendent Filbin to change the name of the old Clinton Elementary School to the Clinton Educational Support Center. Do I have a motion to entertain the request made by Robert Epstein, seconded by Mrs. West? Is there any discussion?
I'll have to.
I like St. John's.
I'll be still putting that on my Christmas.
I like St. John's.
Being no discussion?
I like St. John's.
Church and state are separate. Sorry.
All right, what does it say on the side of the building right now?
St. John's.
No, it doesn't.
It says Clinton Elementary School.
Does it? Oh, okay.
So in order to keep the school street address, the sign really has to go on School Street, right?
That's right. Really, the address is 150 School Street, and what we'll do following this evening's meetings, we'll actually have a professional sign made. Although people, it's a recognizable landmark in the community. Most people can find it easily, but we intend to make a directory where the offices are in that building, and so we've been waiting till we got a name for this.
Is that something the woodworking class at the high school can do?
They certainly didn't do it now.
Yeah.
You think the Zolls could whip us out of there?
Ed, why don't you turn the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's so loud. I don't, I usually blow the place out. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so any further discussion?
I don't think if we don't have that sign till the fall, we'll, any problem.
I mean, what we want to do right now is actually put a sign inside the building with one of those signs with lists, what room and who's in what room.
Oh, directory director.
The directory is what we want to do right away. So that's the very first thing we want to do. We're actually going to have to take those letters off that say Clinton Elementary School. Aren't they on that side of the building?
They're after a poster.
Would you like to buy a letter? We could sell some letters. Buy a bough.
Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor?
Okay. I'd like to now go to the proposed school committee meetings for July through December, which you also have in your packet on the next page. I'd like to change the first date. It was July 13th. I'd like to change that to July 12th.
Which is a Monday.
Which is a Monday.
Do you have your calendar?
This will be Mr. Gau's calendar. But Mr. Filbin did prepare this, so if there are any mistakes, you can blame Mr. Filbin.
And you're available that night before you leave?
It's the 12th?
Yes. The other meetings are on Tuesday through December.
August 10th is okay with everybody?
August 10th?
Yeah, you can always change dates.
If we don't even need to meet in summer, we don't have to, but.
Usually you meet once each month. You'll actually probably have, depending on what happens with the town meeting, there may be several items that will need to be addressed at that first meeting.
Now, we're still meeting in June, correct?
We have a meeting scheduled for June 22nd, which is the night after the town meeting.
Is everybody in the same focus?
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, you do need to vote to adopt it.
Bob, if you say the next make is June 22nd.
June 22nd.
I'll make a motion to accept this calendar.
It's a motion to accept the calendar as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sheridan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? The ayes have it.
And there is one more item. I did include this in your packet, although it didn't show up on the actual agenda. It's a request for the use of the fields by Mr. Edward McIntyre. We've done this for a few years as well. On behalf of the PJ Ween Youth Foundation, I respectfully request the use of the Veterans Memorial Athletic Complex for the purpose of conducting a kids' running program in the 2004 summer. This program will begin on Thursday, July 8th, be conducted on successful Thursdays, and concluding on August 19th. We have approved this in the past. It's a wonderful program that benefits many children in this community, and so I'd recommend that you approve that.
Make a motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion to approve the recommendation for the request to use the facility from attorney Edward McIntyre. Motion by Mr. Sheridan, seconded by Mrs. West. Is there any further discussion? Will this be free of fee?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Just want to comment, we don't charge anybody any fees.
Well, no.
There's no fees charged.
We have a no-fee policy for any of our facilities.
We have an open field policy.
Provided that it's for some local communities.
And that is the Philip Ween Foundation.
That was a unanimous vote?
Unanimous.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Chairman's report.
We don't charge a fee like to pick up the grounds after soccer or anything like that?
No, go up there any Saturday or every Sunday or any evening and look at the number of kids that are playing on those fields.
How many soccer games do we have up there?
Quite a few.
That field is being used seven days a week.
But we don't charge anyone to pick up the blocks.
Not a dime. Our own grounds crew. We're paying because our own grounds crew. Although we do get a lot of support from the organizations themselves. They self-police for the most part.
Okay. Building Committee report? Is there anything to report?
We did have the break in here the other night. Two windows were broken. But I guess.
I can.
The generator is up and working. The portable has been sent back, and ours is up and working, and it's been tested.
Some real upstanding citizens ripped out our basketball stand.
Well, that's Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Right, but it's right next to our building.
Tore it right out of the ground.
Yes. They broke our windows. They're.
Sometime between 10:30 Friday evening and 1:00 Saturday afternoon, there was a break-in into the building. There were two windows that were smashed, one here in the cafeteria, which they did not gain entrance to, and one at the rear of the media center, where they did manage to get inside the building. We are, John Brodeur came right away on Saturday. Keith Lucian, I applaud both of those gentlemen for their speedy response. Jerry also gave a great deal of the afternoon over to this event. She was here with the 53-year class at the time. The police have been very cooperative. They're doing a very thorough investigation. Because there was blood left, and there's footprints, and probably fingerprints, we're well on our way to addressing the situation. Also, we're working on the alarm system and make, that's up and running as of today. The alarm system internally is running tonight.
How many floors is the media center window off the ground?
Well, that's an issue we have discovered today. There is a fence. What we did is we put a fence around the building, and there's a fence that goes next to the building. So that's how they gained. They got on the roof of, they got on this, they got on the roof of the gymnasium, and it was quite a large boulder that they smashed, and it's very thick. It's double-pane glass, so.
And I did notice the screens are back up. That's great. I'm getting pretty good at replacing screens. I can even do that.
I just encourage the local citizens, if they see anybody around the schools, to please just call the police right away and send them up. We'd love to find out who these individuals are, so.
I don't know how the heck they could even.
Everybody's got a cell phone. If you see someone doing some damage, call.
That took a great deal of work. That's extreme. It's all metal. It's very heavy. It's in concrete.
That surprises me because the neighbors are very.
They are very diligent down here.
They are when they hear something.
Don't we have a policeman living here on Ash Street?
Yeah, yeah.
Probably not duty at the time.
Probably not. Superintendent Contract Subcommittee, Robert Epstein and myself have met several occasions with Mr. Gau. We have a verbal agreement that we will bring to your attention this evening. It looks like we're well on our way with this contract. So in a little bit, we'll go into executive session, and we will come back out. We will not adjourn. We will come back out for a public vote of the contract. We will reconvene.
And as she answered, the CTA is on its way, too?
Yeah, right. Subcommittee assignments, I'd like to entertain a motion from one of you, if you could quickly review.
I'll make a motion to approve the subcommittee assignments.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Sheridan, seconded by Mrs. McBrail for the subcommittee assignments. Any further discussion?
No, but I thank you.
You're welcome. All those in favor? Policy review update. Mrs. West and I will begin that accordingly.
This is also a calendar?
Yes. We saw that. I thank Mary for that.
It's just for informational purposes.
And first date will change to 12.
We received a letter from the Parks and Rec that's addressed to Mr. Filbin. Your suggestion to request $100 in supplies for Ash Street shows that you are indeed thinking of mutually beneficial solutions to this issue. As you all know, they tried to charge the school department $100 to use Central Park. Thank you very much for your suggestion. Unfortunately, we must decline. The requested fee is specifically slated to offset costs of your use of Central Park. Also, as you pointed out, Ash Street maintenance is already covered by an agreement between the school department and Parks and Recreation Department. This reasonable fee appears to have caused you undue hardship. While we sympathize with the difficulties of running a town department with such a tight budget, we must ensure that Central Park is appropriately maintained. I have to say, 20 minutes after graduation, there wasn't a speck on the ground. However, reluctantly, the Parks and Recreation Commission has agreed to waive this fee this year. We thank them for that. However, there still will be a fee in future years. If this continues to present a hardship, we suggest you research another site for your graduation ceremony. Your goal of working harmoniously with the Parks and Recreation Department is laudable. Please let us know if there's anything we can do to assist you with this effort.
Is there any other town agency? Do we pay for Memorial Committee?
No one.
Pay for that?
No one has paid a nickel to use the park.
Don't we set all, set up all the chairs?
We do everything. They don't do a thing.
I mean, they cut the grass.
In their defense, they do a beautiful job.
They do a wonderful job, but they cut the grass.
It's magnificent, the setting. They did prepare it very well.
Don't take it away from that, but all I'm saying is that's what they do.
We do hire our own students to set it up and clean up afterwards, always have.
This was not a full support of the Parks and Rec Board, I might add.
When I did hear at the banquet that night how beautiful the park is.
Park is absolutely gorgeous. We can't take that away.
It's just a shame that they want to single out one town office to be charged, but that's okay, because in talking with Mr. Gau, he has a proposal for next year, and, if I may, his proposal is to use the Veterans Athletic Park field for nighttime graduation instead of a daytime graduation. So it looks like we will just stay on our own property and have a nice time.
You know, there's another, I don't know if we're the one singled out either, because I know they did try to charge the police department in the past for use of the packs with the block dancers cleaning up.
There's been no, no, no monies collected.
I don't have a copy of that letter. If anyone's addressed to me.
Yes.
Put that one down.
I have one for the file.
Okay, I want to make sure we put it in the.
I have one for the file.
Thank you.
Important dates to remember, June 11th, Teacher Retirement Party. June 14th is the CHS All-Sports Banquet at the High School Cafeteria.
And Flag Day at the.
No, 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 it's not the 14th, though.
They changed it again?
Mr. Gau, the athletic event, I think, is the 16th, isn't it?
The 16th.
16, okay, I'm sorry. June 16th, which means it may be Thursday, right?
No, Wednesday.
June 16th, Wednesday's the sport banquet.
Sports. One more time.
Where was it going to be?
Clinton High School Cafeteria at 6:00. Tuesday, June 15th, we have the end-of-the-year celebration for preschool, 9:30 and 1:30 p.m. Thursday, June 17th, we have recognition for Grade Eight at the Town Hall, 7:00 p.m. And Thursday, June 10th, we have, C-CAP is having a family fiesta here at the Clinton Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:00. Crafts, games, snacks, music, hands-on fun with Act and Discovery Museum. There'll be a special attraction with family music concert with Roger Tinkell, whoever he is. Is there anything else anyone would like to add?
Attorney Board Party.
Right, I did say that.
Oh, you did?
Yep. Move-up day, yes. The middle school, Wednesday, June 9th, from 7:00 to 9:00, the fifth-grade incoming parents will have a move-up day up at the middle school. The next day, on Thursday, the kids will be doing their own move-up day up at the middle school. Anything else? Anybody have?
Everyone should know.
Only that I would like to comment on Memorial Day, how outstanding the Clinton High bands played.
Yeah, it was great.
I thought the high school, as well as the seventh and eighth grade.
Even at graduation.
Graduation was wonderful.
At graduation, they played wonderful, but, you know, we're going to miss Bill Williams.
We certainly are. Very much.
But those kids played tremendous. I give credit to the instructors at the middle school. school, and certainly to Mr. Williams.
Have we had a meeting since the band concert?
No.
Because that alumni, when the alumni showed up, that was wonderful at the band concert.
Is there any public comments?
You know what he did say, Mr. Williams said, you know, because of the new woman that's taken that position, that he's going to have them all up to his house, the band.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, so.
Have a cookout?
But he didn't invite me.
Oh, well, we'll get you an invite. Mrs. McGrail?
I just wanted to compliment everybody on the high school graduation, and I know it was wonderful, and you know, you read about some of the other graduations, the beach halls and things like that, our kids can, our.
They're the best.
Yeah, it was very nice.
As Mr. Glassing knows, they don't kill them, but, I mean, you know, the kids know that it's important, and.
Respect goes a long way.
And I feel very glad for the person, he has a task mayor, assistant of the town, in terms of recreation, part of what he's trying to do.
But I agree with you, Kathy, it was a beautiful day, and everybody seemed to be enjoying themselves.
Yeah.
And the speeches they delivered.
Yeah.
Were unbelievable.
Remarkable.
And it was a nice touch mentioning the deceased members of the Class of 54, too.
Thank you.
It was very, everything, you know, the kids put us to shame with their speeches, unbelievable, you know?
Just shows you what kind of talent that's coming up the road.
And the scholarships and the awards.
Yeah, the community really.
And the community support is unbelievable.
I think we take it for granted, because it happens every year, but you don't see that everywhere else, we just don't.
And I think they need to be recognized for that.
And we should recognize the communities, what's their name now, Foundation? Clinton Foundation.
Clinton Public Schools Scholarship and Foundation.
Able to solicit and get all those, you know, that was a phenomenal job.
And Mr. Hastings, and the class advisors.
And Bobby LaScola.
They don't get involved with the foundation. Yeah, yeah. It's just, there's a lot of wonderful families up there also. They're share out. Mr. Betris?
Just while last Thursday evening, I had the chance of going to the Mr. Center, had they been doing the League of Middle School Scholar Leader Awards, and that got 500 people, and about 150, 160 middle school students were singled out, and I had the opportunity to go and give to our bright kids and their parents.
Oh, that's great.
They had their pictures taken with Commissioner Driscoll, and Aaron Pete and Michael James.
I really have a favorite.
Great, I should have brought them to the center all the way.
That's nice.
They're great kids, and they're very kind.
That's very good.
Well, you should have brought them here with you tonight.
I should have, I forgot.
Really, 20 seconds. Yeah. It's really nice.
Yeah, congratulations.
There were 200 pictures taken by, I suspect, 200 pictures of graduation, they're going to be on a cable, probably the end.
That's great.
And she took pictures of every single student, bringing them home.
Oh, that's nice, Irene.
And I tried to take most of it, and it will be, I personally take it in, and that's the band.
That's super.
Well, the ones you missed, it's different, picked up. Small examples of community support. I think the photographer even missed a few of those.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the one that walked away was first took, you're on the website, it's there.
Oh, wow.
It was on the website, you go on the website, the Ask the President of 2004, and you can see all the pictures that he took of the graduation.
That's great.
We keep up nice.
At this time, we're going to go into executive session, under Chapter 39, Section 23B of Mass General Laws. I will ask for a roll call vote to enter excessive session to discuss the superintendent's contract. We will reconvene. You can't do CTA.
How about, how about other?
That will be added, that was my mistake. It will be added on the next agenda.
Oh, you're not going to mention it then?
Well, when we come back, we can.
Oh, okay.
So a call for a roll call vote at this time, Mrs. McGrail?
Aye.
Good evening, we're going into the other room. Vice Chair, listen.
Aye.
Madam West?
Mr. Sheridan?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye.
Does that tape recorder?
Soon as the committee comes back. You know what time you went out?
8:5.
I don't think any attention.
7:55.
7:55?
10 minutes ago.
Paying no attention to this.
Takes a little while.
Is this something that? You asked me for that. You wanted an explanation of the diplomas? Okay. Okay, the two bills, one is for the covers and one is for the inserts. We are, we are now back, it is the 16th, it has been a unanimous vote to approve Jerry Gau's contract as superintendent of schools.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, we wish you the very best, I look forward to working with you. The next step will be to forward this down to Dennis Sargent. We have to take another vote in public? To accept this?
We probably should, yes.
I would accept a motion to accept Mr. Gau's contract.
So for accepting the contract, wages, and just review by town council for legality purposes and what.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. McGrail. Any further discussion?
Who made the motion?
Mrs. West, seconded by Mrs. McGrail. All those in favor? It's unanimous. There's no other further business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, 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 you do have other business, you can say you have.
No, I don't have anything else.
How about the?
Other.
Other, is there anything under other?
Why don't you just suggest that we put it on that agenda, though?
I will, I will, that was my mistake, Mrs. McGrail, in doing the agenda for my first time, I neglected to put other for topics, so on our next agenda, we will have.
See, you don't know what you're going to do without me.
No, I'm glad you're here.
I help you.
I'm glad you're here, so we will add other to the, to the agenda. Is there anything further? I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I'd just like to thank everybody for those flowers last night, it was very nice.
No problem, we appreciate you.
And we did get a thank you note from.
Mary McCarthy.
Mary McCarthy, from Hudson, for the interview process and the chance to apply for the job.
I didn't see that, that's okay.
I'm sorry, here it is. Without further ado, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, and again, congratulations, Mr. Gau.